... eighth, eight o'clock, we're in the town council chambers on 61 Echo Lake Road. If anybody would like to join in the pledge allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mary Ann Rosa, Ken Demers.
Here.
Robert De Sina.
Here.
Anthony De Bona. Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Karina Noyd.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public participation. I'm going to, obviously you guys know that you didn't have to fill out a form tonight. I am going to read a statement, though. This is an opportunity for residents to share their concerns, questions, and testimony with the council. Please direct all your comments to the chair. Remain respectful and limit your remarks to three minutes so that all voices may be heard. Council members will not debate during this portion, but once public comment is concluded, they may ask clarifying questions for the record. All testimony will become part of the official record and will be used by the council in its deliberations. So, anybody from the public? Please state your name and your address, please.
There we go. Catherine Dinsmore, 35 Reynolds. A financial hardship has been imposed on WSA and fire district ratepayers, some of whom are elderly and moderate to low-income residents. I am asking the town to provide information and resources that might ease a bit of their financial burden. The town should personally contact the 99 households in the Westgate District, which will have to endure an obscene 200% increase in their water bills alone, and provide information and assistance with applications for energy assistance, the town's food bank, and holiday assistance programs, and SNAP. Although personally contacting the 4,500 WSA ratepayers and the 2,200 fire district ratepayers would not be feasible, although I wish it were, letters from the town offering help to obtain the above services should be sent to those households, the BOA, churches, and civic organizations. Sadly, some of these residents might fall just above the income-eligible guidelines for assistance, which eliminates them from receiving services, but unfortunately, not from the strain of figuring out how to buy groceries, pay for fuel, and fill costly prescriptions. Perhaps the food bank could offer exemptions for these residents. Additionally, the senior center's newsletter should announce that staff will help older residents apply for assistance programs. Historically, the senior center was responsible for social service appointments for residents 55 and older and disabled residents of any age, while social services handled requests from residents under 55. Press releases outlining available programs and assistance with applications for the affected residents should be sent to the Republican, American, and Town Times. Is this a lot of work? Yes, it is. Do you owe it to the residents? Yes, you do. If you need volunteers, let me know.
Anybody else?
Tom Donston, 320 Park Road, Watertown. So, in my travels, I met up with a person, and he says, said a select few people in this town had a meeting with Connecticut Water, and he informed me that Connecticut Water basically would have covered the cost of our bonding on this. You know, and they take over their water. The only thing we'd have to still deal with is the sewers. Why are we bonding stuff out when Connecticut Water could take care of us?
Tom, Tom, could you please direct your questions, Ms. White, please?
It's to all of you. Why are we not dealing with Connecticut Water? Their offer was to cover what we're bonding. You know, that's, and, you know, and if the attorneys that are continuing this mess with the courts are, you know, did they say, "Don't do this"? In my opinion, they probably should be fired, but that's neither here nor there, you know? I think we should go after Connecticut Water's offer. And it's, it's kind of stupid for us to bond out between both bonds, $44 million, when Connecticut Water was basically going to give us that amount of money to take care of us. And we still got to, we still got to do the sewer, but it's not going to change. You know, we're clearly terrible at running water and sewer in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last week, I met with Waterbury Mayor Paul Perneruski and two members of his staff to discuss the judgment. I went not representing the town in any official capacity or as DTC chair, but as a concerned citizen on behalf of concerned citizens of Watertown. I asked the mayor about a few different options, starting with a temporary moratorium on interest until Watertown can hold a delayed referendum that would give time for all options to be discussed. The mayor responded that Waterbury could not change the interest due to it being a judgment, and even if it could, it could set a precedent for other ratepayers in Waterbury to request the same. I don't know about the latter, but the former is correct. The court or the legislature, through legislation can do it, but Waterbury cannot unilaterally decide to do so. It could be part of a structured settlement to delay interest upon repayment plan, but it would only delay it. We discussed a few more options, but it seemed to me that there were no avenues for relief through Waterbury. Even if there were, it seems to me they would rather just get the money as soon as they could, since they really needed $34 million themselves. Also, about a week and a half ago, I began discussions with State Treasurer Eric Russell. When I told him about this issue, he informed me that this was the first time he had heard about it. This was just after Labor Day. That means no one from Watertown, including our legislative delegation, spoke to the state treasurer or his office until I did. We discussed potential state options, and those discussions are ongoing. Doing my research, Marb seems unlikely, given the town's current bonding rating, but there are other options possibly available. Regardless, this whole affair has been made, has been an exercise in hubris, incompetence, arrogance, and ineptitude. The people of Watertown and Oakville are being made to pay for an enormous, made an enormous price for this. Their leaders over a number of years made these decisions often with either little or no transparency. There was no contingency plan made in the event of a court loss, no litigation at the beginning of this process while paying. Every decision made throughout this has been the wrong one. Yet despite all of this, they still, still do not take accountability. In fact, they still blame Waterbury. They offer no apologies for what they did. They are now suddenly concerned with $355,000 of monthly interest, blaming those who vote "no" that those voters will be responsible for the town's financial fallout, completely ignoring that they ran up $34 million in debt. This is why I've asked for more time. Pennies on the dollar at this point is costing, is the cost of delaying a month or two. Get all of this information out to the people. There are versions of this bond that might be more suitable. Rushing a vote with incomplete or worse information will not help get a yes vote. If a yes vote is what is needed, explain it in detail with other options considered and rejected, and why those options were rejected. People need to vote their conscience on this referendum, and then vote out the cabal that did this to us. Thank you.
Richard Rosansky, 35 Reynolds Street, just came from another meeting at the fire district. Just want to share something that they stated there. We all know what's going on with the Westgate residents. They're facing a 200% increase on their, on their water rate because they receive their water from the fire district at a bulk rate, which is the fire district residence rate plus 25%. And there were some Westgate, um, some residents from that district that were at the meeting, and were asking questions about why their water bill was so high. And the fire district said, "As a water utility," they have never seen another water utility single out a certain segment of their customer base to charge a different water rate. They stated that the overall cost of water to the WSA should be spread equally across the entire rate base. So, the Westgate residents should not be charged separately at a different rate just because their water comes from the fire district at a different rate than what Waterbury charges the WSA. So, just food for thought, the Westgate people are being discriminated against terribly. A 200% increase is really inconscionable. And the fact that the WSA had no empathy, not a single comment during the rate increase hearings in sympathy with the Westgate residents, no offer to even try to step up that increase over time, is really unconscionable. Thank you.
Catherine Camera, 31 Cottage Place. I misunderstood, somehow this was a question and answer with a bonding agent, so I just had some questions. Haven't timed this, so I don't know how to work out. So, one of my questions was, was that as I understand it, the town is ultimately responsible for this bond, so what happens if the WSA does not have enough on hand to make one of the bond payments? Is that shortfall coming from the general fund? Another question I would have asked was, we have been told that no properties will be leaned due to this calamity. So, let's say an elderly ratepayer pays the portion of their bill that is for water and sewer, but can't pay the additional portion of their bill that's for the bond payment. Does that mean they don't have to worry about a lien on their property because shortfalls will be paid from the general fund? They would have paid the utility bill, just not the bond payment. So, would that be correct? We're told nobody's going to get leaned, and we're told this is a town issue. There could be shortfalls because people could, A, not pay it, have a foreclosure, a business could go out of, out of business while they still have water bills. So, are we being told then that that money that is not collected by WSA is coming out of the general fund? Because I got to tell you, I'm totally confused on this. I also always wonder, do we have a sewer credit for, or a lower rate for residents that fill their pools, since that water is not treated and returned to the sewer system? I know that other places do. I don't think we do, and I think we should, especially now. I would like to make a statement about the 18% interest, because people who should know better are saying that the judge or the mayor are charging us unjust interest. That 18% interest rate applied to outstanding utility bills is set by statute. So, anyone who thinks it's unjust needs to seek out our state representatives to ask them to work on a change of the statute. It is statutory, and I'm really tired of seeing everybody being blamed for this interest. It would be our state reps that need to handle changing the statute if people don't like the 18%. I mean, I don't like it either, but it's what it is. And lastly, I just want to say that I heard that the senior center bus is going to the Big E on September 16th. So, seniors that need a ride to the referendum wouldn't be provided one by our senior bus, and I think that's crazy. This is affecting them. They should be able to have a bus to go to the referendum. So, I would hope someone would look into that. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Frankie Popolowski, 35 Chestnut Avenue. I guess I misunderstood this meeting, too. I thought we were going to ask questions and get answers, and I'm a little disgusted that you are limiting us to three minutes again. That's, this is a big deal, a big deal for all of us. I have a couple of questions. The 81 cents per 1,000 gallons that the water and sewer want to attach to our bills for administrative and billing purposes, what's happened that they all of a sudden need all this money? I'd like to know the total gallons that they are charging 81 cents for, because it's a lot of money, if you look at it correctly. I agree that a couple more months aren't going to be, for all of us that are voting "no" in the grand scheme of things. I don't think a couple more months is too much to ask. I don't, I don't, from what I understand, the bonding takes several months anyway, so that's going to be an issue. The water and sewer keeps talking about this infiltration. Well, I walked around my property the other day when it was raining so hard, looked at the sewer and the water caps. One is so close to the road that the plow guy keeps hitting it and breaking it off. So, when I looked at that the other day, the thing was bubbling like crazy. That's because all this water was going down. So, I don't know why, when that cap came off and I reported it, that that wasn't fixed. I, I, this infiltration thing just doesn't make any sense when part of it's, it's your own fault. Excuse me. That's it. I'm disgusted.
I think someone's getting up behind you, Rich, but you could, yes.
Tom Idaroldo, Circuit Avenue. I think it's horrible.
Our water and sewer department.
Messed up their financial end of it, and the Westgate people are getting the shaft for it. They made the mistake. It wasn't the residents that didn't pay their bills, but the water and sewer misjudged, and now we're getting charged at 200%. Plus, to make matters worse, they're doing away with the 8,000 gallon winter rate. That's horrible. You're, you're adding insult to injury on everything you're doing. Either this council or the water and sewer, there's something lacking here. If anybody wants to be elected come November, something's got to change. Thank you.
Debbie Bootide, Echo Lake Road. I'm a senior citizen. I live on Social Security. With the tax increase we just had, I was hit pretty hard. This is devastating. I live in the fire district. I just came from the fire district meeting. I know that their $6 million bill is in dispute. Because of that, there are no hard numbers going into this referendum. That makes me extremely nervous. I would not buy a house without knowing what my mortgage is going to be. I can't vote on this referendum without knowing what the hard numbers are going to be. Nobody would. You wouldn't. Why should I? This is going to cost me for 20 years. There's a couple of things I'm nervous about. One of the things I've read, in some of the documents I've read, said that if people, say, conserve water, they might have to relook at the numbers, because you have to bring in a certain amount of money. So, conserving water is out of the question, because if you conserve water, then you have to raise the right, the rates. So, conserving water's out of the question. So, people in Oakville, the water sewer people, that's not me, because the water doesn't affect me, the sewer does, but the water doesn't. So, those people don't conserve water to make your numbers go down, because we'll raise your numbers. There's that. So, I'm, I'm going to vote "no." I'm just letting you know. And a lot of the people I've talked to are going to vote "no," because they're in the same position I am. I have to count my numbers, and guess what? In May, budget time is going to come again, and guaranteed, you're going to raise my taxes again. The money doesn't fall from my trees in my backyard. I don't want to lose my house that I've been paying for, for 25 years. Don't take it away from me, because you made a mistake. You did this by not paying the bill when you should have. I don't want to lose my house, because you didn't pay your bill. And I'm not alone. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks for letting me speak again. Rich Rosansky, 35 Reynolds Street. Just a couple of things I just wanted to talk about. First, at the fire district meeting, they said that they're pretty much assured that we won't have any fire district numbers by the referendum date. So, hopefully, when you have your discussion later, you'll at least bring that up and talk about what the impact of that is, as far as the bonding goes. Another thing that, that hasn't been discussed so far, and hopefully, you'll be able to shed some light on that also, is the residents that have sewer-only through the WSA, such as Westgate, such as Winding Brook Farms. Do we have any plan on what their bond cost will be when they, they really only use half of the system, and how you would assess a bond cost to them? And then, senior housing is the same, the Watertown Housing Authority gets a 27% discount on their water and sewer from the WSA. How will the bond cost be assessed towards the housing authority? Will it be the same as any other WSA customer, or would indeed there be some discount applied for the, the housing authority? And then, then finally, one of the common themes that I hear on social media is about the $7 million interest that accompanies, you know, that's part of the $34 million judgment. And I frequently hear people say, "I'm happy to pay any of the, the water and sewer costs that are due Waterbury, but I don't feel it should be just the ratepayers who pay the interest, the $7 million interest on the loan." And it's something that neither the WSA nor the town council has spoken about publicly, and it would be nice to hear the town council's view on that $7 million interest, and who, why you feel that only the ratepayers should pay that, and that it shouldn't be spread across the whole tax base. Thank you.
Amanda Manforty, Williamson Circle in Oakville. I come late tonight, and I apologize. I did just come from the Board of Education meeting where I spoke, and I won't go into too much details, but I will let you know that because of the, the current Board of Education we have in place now, my son is successfully going to graduate this year, and I couldn't tell you that four years ago. They are working collaboratively, they are transparent, and yet, this board continues to cut their budget without getting, going to referendum first, which is going to take away a very high value from our town. On top of that, we have this water sewer issue. I do, I had, at one time, left the state and was living down in North Carolina. So, I am familiar with our town. I'm familiar with Charlotte Mecklenburg, which happens to be the seventh-largest board, education board in the country, and also a very small rural county down there as well. I'm very familiar with different things, and one thing I will have to say is we need more education by this board before you cut budgets. And more information out to the town regarding education, so they understand the value that we have here, because my family is now split. I have one child still down there, and I had to come back up with my two older children, because my son would not be graduating today, this year, if we stayed there. Onto the sewer and water. I live here with my parents. My parents mistakenly thought that this did not impact them, because they live in Oakville, and thought their water just comes from a different reservoir, so it doesn't impact them. And that is not true. You do not educate the town, you're not transparent, and this is a huge problem. I do believe that there needs to be a public admission of mismanagement of the situation that caused us to be in these dire financial straits now. We have citizens crying, thinking they're losing their homes. I'm worried for my parents on their fixed income, and I think the best thing that can happen is an acknowledgement on your part that this was unfortunate, and that there are going to be checks and balances implemented to make sure something like this never happens again. I do wish that you would move the referendum and have a Q and A. And there should be a Q and A at every meeting, at the end of every meeting, town council meeting. It is okay to pass on questions and say, "I'll get back to you," but I do feel there needs to be more transparency, and we have a right to have our questions that can be answered in real time answered. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? There you go.
Hello, Joseph Crowe, Circuit Avenue. I just have a quick question. Will well and septic, people on well and septic be affected by this increase in price, or are they excluded from price increases going forward? Is a, is a question, I know it's public, I'm just curious.
We won't be answering any questions tonight, but we have several questions we're going to be asking later, so that's probably on the list.
Okay. Beautiful, beautiful.
Good evening, Erica Wasniak of Oak Drive. Some of these people that live in this town are veterans, they're on fixed income, Social Security. This poor lady's crying because she's afraid she's going to lose her house. Is there any compassion for our elderly? Have you been to the senior center? Have you been to the local VFW 7330? Where's the compassion? I've born, raised here, I live here, I'll be 42 in December, don't tell anybody, but listen, look at these elderly people in this room, scared they're losing their houses, so they work their whole life for their home. Some of these people don't have mortgages, and they're going to get a lien put on their house because they can't afford this new water bill? Will the town at least take care of the interest? My bill's going to go up $300 a month supposedly, if I use 45,000 gallons every quarter. But we don't take questions, so is it okay that she gets a lien on her house? Is the town going to pay the interest?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Come on. Let's do it.
Why bother with this meeting if you're not going to talk to us? You're not having another meeting before this vote. So, what good are any of you? Right now, we don't feel it.
Frankie, there's, there's an item five on the agenda. Frankie, there, there's an, there's an item five on the agenda that talks to discussing, and that's when we'll do our discussion, when we're done with public participation.
I'm asking, well, you're not gonna answer me anyway. What I'm saying is, if there's no more meetings before the vote, how do we get any answers? We're not getting them still.
I, I think there actually is a meeting before the vote.
Really? When? Tell us, Kenny.
Do we have a meeting on the 15th? We do.
September 15th, is that what you said?
Yeah.
7 o'clock here?
Yeah, sure, you could apologize.
I'm not apologizing to you. You'd be the last person I'd apologize to.
I figured that.
So is this meeting so people can talk and get, and ask questions and get answers?
It's the next item on the agenda.
So September, what's, what's the date again?
15th.
7 o'clock. Everybody got that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Why can't we have a Q and A right now? Can you guys bring that to a vote right now? It's for you.
If there's nobody else from the public, I'm closing public participation.
You can't do that.
Why don't you open up your Q and A now? Take a vote right now, Barbara, and show us some public participation.
It's a special meeting, and we can't add or change the agenda.
Good evening, Barbara Zelkaski, 17 Mallory Road. I was asked yesterday, like, what would I do in this situation? And in previous conversations with the town manager, I've always, if I have a problem, I have a, some sort of solution. And this is the way that I raise my children. If you had a problem, you can come to me, but I want to hear what you have, you know, to resolve your issue. So I'm gonna read what I wrote this person yesterday. I'm gonna leave some of the items out because it's, you know, it's not relevant. I've already proposed several constructive solutions to address the situation online. To summarize, fair and transparent rate structures. We need both rate models that are both equitable and clearly communicated. The current proposals are unrealistic. They fail to reflect the, the evolving needs of individuals and the town. WSA's billing practices should have been revised long before the original judgment. Meanwhile, the fire district began adjusting its rates three years ago and is significantly ahead of WSA. As a result, their ratepayers will experience, experience less sticker shock when rates rise another 25% to align with Waterbury's structure. Note, Westgate's rates from the fire district were never enforced by WSA. State-level assistance. The idea that we're not qualified for state support is misleading and must be challenged. Resources exist, we just haven't pursued them. I've initiated a letter of writing campaign to state officials, including the Secretary of State, DEEP, our senators, and the Connecticut Republican Party. I plan to share these letters publicly so residents can use them as templates and access contact information. This kind of outreach should have been a priority for our leadership years ago. Infrastructure grants. I'm going to, I'm going to not read that part, but there is infrastructure grants available that, if the town were smart, they would join techsoup.org, T-E-C-H-S-O-U-P dot org, and get GrantStation, which costs you $99 a year. And you can go ahead and look up your own grants for the town. And that's, and that should be something that we should do. Transparency and oversight. It's time for real accountability. Blaming the fire district judges or Waterbury attorneys is a distraction. We should be placing claims on the bonds held by town leadership. That would include anybody on town council, town manager, finance director, bonds funded, bonds funded by the taxpayers. But doing so would require admitting fiscal mismanagement. When the TC on the August 12th public meeting was asked about being bonded, they claimed ignorance. That's not transparency, it's evasion, it's evasion. Since then, I can't, mysteriously, I can't find the video from August 12th online anymore. I can't figure out that. And I've been in IT for 40 years, so it's gotta be somewhere. And then, there also should be...
Barbara, I'm sorry. We hit the three-minute mark.
I'm gonna reclaim my three minutes.
No, you're not.
Why not? Because Mr. DeMire's, you and I have spoken...
Because that's not, that's not the rules. You're not gonna reclaim your three minutes.
Well, then I'm gonna end on this note. Long-term safeguards. And you need to consider, when doing these rates, any type of changes that can happen within the town, whether it's a disaster...
Through the chair.
Pipe, whatever.
Point of order, please. Yeah. Sorry, Barbara.
Whatever. Censorship. Great. Thank you.
Inflamateur.
Very inflammatory.
I can go again.
Yeah, she could.
There's nobody in between.
She's done.
Let me go.
We should get the officer to ask.
Go, go, go.
Don't let her.
I'll try and get some.
Don't let her.
I'm almost done.
There needs to be long-term safeguards. We must establish lasting protections that promote fiscal responsibilities and rebuild public trust. That includes better planning, clearer communication, and mechanisms for resident input on major financial decisions. I don't think with this whole water rate, rate thing and this next-gen consulting firm that you have doing these numbers are taking into consideration anything that may happen within this town. And I talked earlier, and I just said earlier, there could be a disaster, you could have major pipes burst, anything can happen. And then, that becomes the responsibility of the ratepayers because you are gonna have to raise your rate to cover those incidents. And that's all I'm gonna say. But y'all, y'all should, like, consider some of these, some of these, the town, Facebook, whatever, social media, you really should take into consideration what they are saying. Y'all don't have any trust. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm voting no for the bond because I don't trust you.
Anybody else from the public? All right, we're gonna close public participation. We're gonna move on to item five, which is discussion of the water and sewer repayment scenarios and assumptions. But before we do that, I just want to let the council and public know who's in the chambers with us. We have Attorney Glenn Ryback, the bond counsel. We have Barry Bernouby, the managing director of Phoenix Advisors. We have Attorney Paul Jessel, town attorney. Dave McMahon, superintendent of water and sewer. Jim Strugden, chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission. And Joe Massey, Water and Sewer Commissioner, and several staff members. So I'm gonna open up by asking the town council if anybody has any questions.
Yes, through the chair.
Sure. Good.
What will the fire district contribute towards the cost? I guess that's to you, Mark.
Hi, everyone. I'm the Assistant Finance Director. We've prepared a full accounting of the City of Waterbury billings. It's been reviewed by our attorneys, sent to the fire district. We anticipate it'll be somewhere in the range of 5.5 to 8.5 million.
I'm sorry, 5.5?
5.5 to 8.5 million.
Can't hear you.
Sorry. 5, 5.5 to 8.5 million.
Yeah.
There's no, public participation's over, guys.
You're welcome.
Through the chair. If whatever MO is due from the fire district is delayed because of disagreements in the number, disagreements in them owing us, what is our plan to recoup that? What type of timeline can we be dealing with?
So I don't think we have a direct timeline at this point. We're still in negotiations with the WFD. They were just presented with the full accounting. The reasons why we're running from 5 and 1/2 to 8 and 1/2 million dollars is because of the application of interest, and the interest upon interest where there was the post-judgment interest. So we have one year to go after these bands, and that's a short-term bonding we have discussed in the past. And that'll give us one year to work through that process with WFD. I'm hoping that we'll be able to rectify those numbers and we'll come to some agreement before the end of that year.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Sure.
I just attended the fire district meeting before this meeting. And in their meeting, they stated that as of this afternoon, they have not received a full accounting. They don't know what their bill is. There's discrepancy there.
Okay, so there may be a discrepancy, but we've prepared the full accounting. It was, I believe, sent through our town attorney, who sent it to the attorney for the fire district.
It hasn't gone yet, it's going out.
Through the chair. There is a lot of discussion on the type of bond that we're going after, and could someone give us a little information on why a general obligation bond is the best route to go?
Mr. Barnaby, would you please answer that question?
So, so, so the town, we are exploring doing a general obligation bond. There has been some options considered to do a revenue-only bond. A few municipalities throughout the state have done revenue-bond-only issues. However, we don't think it's, it's, it's the most cost-effective option for the town to pursue. And the reason primarily is, by the town doing a general obligation bond, the interest rate will be much lower than it would be if it was a revenue-only bond. And in addition to the interest costs being much lower, the issuance costs are much, much higher for a revenue bond issue than it is for a, a general obligation bond. So based on a $30 million bond issue, the interest cost, the additional interest cost for a revenue-only bond would be close to $1 million more over the 20 years. So, so currently, right now, the town of Watertown has a bonds that were issued, general obligation bonds that were issued in the past for water and sewer projects. And, and they got a great interest rate for that. And, and the, the WSA and, and the Sewer Authority pays the town for those bonds already. So that would be the same process. Long story short, the much, much lower interest cost by doing general obligation bonds than revenue, than revenue bonds.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Sure, Rachel.
I, I have more questions for the bonding attorney. So I, I've had questions directed at me about state, state statutes and general obligation bonds and who's responsible for them. I know I asked you this in the meeting where you were in terms of that, the bond is issued on the full faith and credit of the town. But my understanding, it's the WSA's responsibility. But is that legal? I thought that, that if you're, if the general obligation is for the town, how come it's only their responsibility, the WSA? And if anything happens, will the town be liable in any way to repay the bond?
Well, I can't opine on the legal aspects, but as I said already, the, the town has issued general obligation bonds in the past for water and sewer projects. So this is not something new. It's, it's done before. And it's my understanding that the town pays the debt service on those bonds, but they get reimbursed by the Water and Sewer Authority to, to pay back the town for those. So, so I think the short answer to your question is yes, the town can issue general obligation bonds for these water and sewer projects.
But this isn't really a project, right? It's paying off a debt for a lawsuit where the town itself was sued, not the WSA. I mean, the name of the lawsuit is Waterbury versus Watertown. So isn't it Watertown legally responsible and not the WSA?
Councilwoman Ryan, Mr. Barnaby is not our bond counsel, Mr. Ryback he is. Maybe that question would be better answered by our bond attorney, Mr. Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he was an attorney.
I mean, he's, he's on the hot seat, and I prefer that you get it from the right
I believe your question was, is if we issue GEO bonds...
Yes.
Is the town as a whole responsible for it? With regards to the bond payments themselves, yes, it would be the town's responsibility.
Okay, so then how is it that it's gonna be paid by the WSA and not the whole town?
What the understanding was, is that the, the town itself...
Is there a microphone?
Sure. The town itself would be the issuer of the bonds, and as issuer, they would be responsible for paying bondholders the money. Any reimbursement for that debt service that's being paid on the bonds, the understanding was that there would be an agreement or agreements, I don't know if it was gonna be one, two, or such, that would be between the town and the WSA and the fire district, I believe.
Okay, so just for, like, just accounting purposes, so I understand this. The town takes out the bond, the town gets that money, the town then pays Waterbury, and then we now have a 4%, 5% interest that we're paying on that bond. But then, the Water and Sewer Authority is gonna then pay the town based on the rates that they're charging the customers?
As far as the basis for the payment, that I'm gonna say I assume so. I, I don't know that.
Will there be legal documentation?
There would be an agreement, memorandum of, memorandum of understanding, or just an outright, any sort of agreement between the town and the, and the WSA as far as what those, what those payments would be, when they'd be due. It, it would be more than just, call it a gentleman's handshake sort of thing. There would be an actual agreement in place.
Okay. Is an agreement the same thing as a contract?
Yes.
Like a legal contract?
Can I jump in for just a second? I'm sorry.
So we also have the consolidation ordinance in Watertown.
Did you say consolidation ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So that's the ordinance that created the Water and Sewer Authority when it merged into the town. It used to be the old Oakville Fire District. Without going into too much detail, the consolidation ordinance states that special benefits are paid by the Water and Sewer Authority. And rates and usages are clearly special benefits. And unfortunately, this entire amount of money would qualify as a special benefit because it's totally related to usage. Interest on unpaid...
Okay.
So there's nothing WSA to tell...
Right. Okay. I guess I'm just, I mean, people are concerned that, you know, taxes are gonna go up if the WSA can't pay off the general obligation bond. And if it's for the town, I just wanna make sure I'm clear and the people in the audience here are clear on how it's gonna be paid. And then, on top of the fact that the fire district doesn't seem to have the $6 million, so that's a significant shortfall in the calculations that have been made. And my assumption is, according to the meeting, the fire district is hiring an attorney, which then means we would have to pay attorneys, so that's gonna add to the cost of this whole situation. Am I understanding that correctly?
We have another meeting with the fire district next week, I believe. It hasn't been set yet.
Excuse me, please. I don't want to ask people to have to leave. Thank you. Through the chair. Through the chair, if I may. I have several questions. The first question is obviously based on questions raised by members of the ordinance, concerns and questions. Is there any possibility of outside financial relief? That is state, federal bailout or grant assistance?
So at this point, there is no access for us to get legal or state bailout at this point. We have explored that with our representative, Mr. Paletta. If the referendum were to fail, then we would reconsider that and look at those options.
Thank you. If I may? Sure. If I may continue, through the chair. A question of concern to myself and other members of the council, who, by the way, were not on the council back in 2017, 2018, is... not on the council back in 2017, 2018, is why were the water and sewer rates issues not raised when Waterbury first filed the suit back then?
Was the question why we didn't raise rates right at the time when Waterbury filed the suit?
Yes.
Okay. So as I understand it, both the Water and Sewer Authority, or certainly the Water and Sewer Authority, had concerns that, number one, Waterbury wouldn't pay us back if we overpaid. Number two, we continued time and time and time again to negotiate a contract with the city of Waterbury, and we were rebuffed. However, we sent them letters, we had a formal mediation, we had a second formal mediation at which we were, as far as I could tell, fairly close to getting some resolution, and Waterbury couldn't meet again. So it's been a real problem to get Waterbury to the table. And I think the reason that they didn't want to raise rates was to get Waterbury to the table.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jessel. Well, explain to me.
Through the chair. Paul, what's the status of our, let's say, our case with the Connecticut Supreme Court? My understanding is that we filed something, they have a deadline of...
We filed a petition for certification to have the Supreme Court agree to hear the appeal. That was filed in July. The Supreme Court takes the month of August off, so they are just back in from their vacation. What I am told is best bets, we will hear sometime perhaps in October.
Is there a firm like Deadline or not?
No, they have no deadline for doing, acting on that.
Okay. Through the chair.
Sure.
Since you're up here, what will the bond payback obligation be to the Westgate customers?
I'm probably not the best one to answer that question, but what I'll say is that it would seem to me, anyway, that they would only be paying the sewer portion because that's the portion that they get from Waterbury. The water is coming from the fire district.
Through the chair. At our last meeting, we voted on ratepayers paying toward the bond obligation. If I recall, it was based on water usage. One of the questions that came out, what about customers that are only sewer customers? How will that get allocated?
So I think it's going to be the recommendation of, at least myself, that that be proportionately charged to those that are not using town water, water and sewer. That will have to go in front of the WSA board. They'll have to have another public hearing to actually discuss that, and it will be their responsibility to make that decision. Just as a reminder, the WSA board is subordinate to the town council, so I'm sure that that's something the council could discuss and make a recommendation as well.
Through the chair. The question was asked to me, too, if the referendum does fail, is there a chance that Watertown would file for bankruptcy at all?
I don't believe we're in that position at this time to really discuss bankruptcy. If we continue to go without paying our debt, I mean, it will become unsustainable with an 18 and 8%. I would, I don't really know. The council's going to have to have discussions on how to move this forward after a decision is made on the 16th.
Through the chair, if I may. Since it was brought up by somebody here that their monthly bill was going to go up $300, what will the average ratepayer pay under the WSA? That's what we're trying to find out.
So I think that would be most appropriately answered by WSA if Mr. McMahon or the chairman would like to kind of walk through that.
Dave McMahon, superintendent. So the handout that is online and what we provided at the public hearing and what's available, the scenario is you have to, right now, we have an under $12,000 and then you have an over $12,000. The over $12,000 has a cost to that number. So the example for the WSA overall customers is only $43.42 per quarter, which is only $1.73.68, okay? On the backside of that handout, for that same 13,000 gallon example, for the Westgate system and WSA sewer side, is $111.67 per quarter, which is $446.68 annually. The second page is for the WSA customers that we get water from Waterbury. So that example is only $36.74 per quarter, which is $146.96 annually. For the fire district, the Westgate customers, for that 11,000 gallon example is $94.49 per quarter, which is $377.96 annually.
Mr. Chairman, just as a reminder, we're not here talking about water rates today. I think this explanation is helpful. It's very complicated to pick up a paper and walk, work through this. We have been working with the WSA and our computer system to put a calculator online so that when residents need to look and see what the actual impact is to the rate increase, they could actually see it in real time. We have not been able to accomplish this at that time because we're still working through that. But for today's referendum, I think the numbers need to really speak to the bond piece because we have no control over what the rates are at this point as far as Waterbury is concerned.
I have a follow-up to that, then. So is the $295 a year, is that based on $34 million or $24 million?
So I think I could answer that as well. At this point, it's based on the $24 million. There is, we estimated that the WFD is responsible for, as we said, the $6 million. We backed out the $24 million. As we discussed this referendum, we did talk about looking at a total $30 million bond because we discussed that we would do short-term bans over the year and allow us time to recoup the money from WFD and figure out that path. So it is based on the $24 million. I know it's a lot for our citizens to trust that we're going to go after it, but there is no other way. And the assumption was that interest is accumulating at $355,000 a month. It would be in the best interest for us to stop that and then go back and recoup everything, regroup, and set the rates or adjust the rates if needed, specifically in regards to what our choices is as we move forward.
Through the chair. Back to the rate that ratepayers would need to pay toward the bond. We voted on kind of a method that would be calculated at our last meeting. There is a lot of discussion on if that was the right method, if it should have been more of a hybrid, if it, whatever. I mean, there's 100 different ways that it could be kind of spread out. Would it be safe to say that since the last meeting, that was determined by just a simple town council vote, that if at some point in time, it was determined that the best move for the town is to change the method that it's being charged? So right now, it's just ratepayers based on estimated usage, so on and so forth. If it was deemed that that was not the best method and we wanted to change it, would it be a simple town council vote that would then change it?
So again, it's, you know, the council voted to use the usage as a reference for repayment so that we could give a number to the ratepayers. If, as we follow the accounting, at some point, we may determine that, as we talked about, conservation comes into play. You know, if we lose a large user, that would affect the way the repayment would be. Yes, the council would have to reconvene, and they would then make a recommendation to the WSA, who would again have to have another meeting, a public hearing, and discuss, you know, the impact of what's happening. So again, this is not something that, you know, we're going to put on the shelf. This is something that has to be monitored and monitored closely so that we could report back to the council as well as the townspeople.
Thank you.
Through the chair. So the numbers that are out currently for the bond repayment are based on the $24 million. I think that we need more clarity for people. I think that these numbers should be based on worst-case scenarios so that people can go into referendum knowing the worst and hoping for the best. Because up until a few months ago, even in my place, I was looking at numbers that were being told of $10 million in reserve from the Water and Sewer Authority and $6 million from the fire district. And we made a $5 million payment from the Water and Sewer Authority, and now we're not sure, you know, what will happen with the fire district. I think people need to go into referendum with a clear expectation of what could possibly be their highest bill.
I don't think we're going to have a clear indication of what the highest bill is. And as we discussed by going out to bans, and I'm going to ask Mr. Varnaby to kind of answer this more clearly for everybody in the room, we're going for a one-year ban that will be adjusted. It may start at $30,000 at the end of the year. If we're not have those numbers, if we have not finalized the numbers with WFD, we may have to regroup again. But, Mr. Varnaby, maybe you could explain that a little more clearly on the banning process.
Right, so, I mean, the way I see it is this is kind of a triage situation where this liability is accruing at 18% each year. By the town, if the referendum passes and we do this bond anticipation note, short-term borrowing, the town could pay off that liability and bring that 18% down to roughly 4%. That would stop the bleeding dramatically. And that would give the town, as the town manager said, time to recoup, to analyze the actual cost over the next year. And when it's time to actually do a permanent financing a year from now, the town will have its arms around the situation to bond just the net amount, the true cost that's needed. And if there's some, something happens down the road, a state grant does happen, something, the authorities are sold, the assets are sold, the town will always have the opportunity to pay off all or a portion of these bonds at any point in the future. And the town will also have an opportunity to refinance the loan to a lower rate in the future if interest rates were to decrease again. So that's why I understand there's a lot of frustration, people saying, well, no. But each time this referendum, if it's deferred, that liability is going to grow at 18%. This bond anticipation note will lower that and cap it, no higher than 4%, which seems like a huge benefit to the town to bring that liability, that bleeding, from 18% to 4%. And it'll give the town a year to get their arms around the final cost and make sure the permanent financing is done at the lowest rate, at the lowest amount possible over the course of the next 12 months. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Through the chair. There are discussion on the ability for towns to put liens on people's property. It is my understanding that Waterbury cannot put any liens on properties because of the bills not being paid, but if an individual resident or business does not pay their water bill, the town of Watertown has the ability to put a lien on their house, just like they didn't pay taxes. Is that an accurate statement?
That is a very accurate statement.
Thank you.
Through the chair. There was a question from the floor also that came up about Connecticut Water. Can anybody take that on?
Yes, I'll be happy to. I was involved in that discussion with Connecticut Water. And it's still on the table. It's just, we, selling an asset like this is not something that I put a for sale sign and we, you know, take the highest bidder. There was some interest from Connecticut Water, as there is interest from possibly other entities. But at this point, we have to go through an RFP and an RFQ process and allow that person to bid. Just as an additional thought process so that everybody in the room understands it, if our liability is not taken care of, we now have an asset that has a huge liability. Connecticut Water at no point said, nor do I think they're allowed to, buy for full retail rate. It's a wholesale rate or fixed asset rate. So for the discussion points that are out in the public where they're saying Connecticut Water said, "We're going to buy the whole debt," that's not legally possible at this point. So it's not a true statement. We are going to continue to aggressively follow that asset, but that has to be a decision that's based on the input from the townspeople. And I think as a result of everything we're going through with the decisions that were made without their input, it's even more imperative that we get their input as we discuss selling an asset for the town of Watertown.
Another one through the chair that came off the floor. Well-inseptic people.
So again, we've had this discussion several times, and it was clarified in actually the statement. So well-inseptic people are not directly affected, is that they would not be, if this referendum were to pass as the resolutions have been written, they would not be responsible to pay for the bonding portion. If that referendum fails, everything will probably go back on the table, and that that may change. So the only impact to a water and sewer rate pay would be the adjustment of rates as it pertains to...
Well-inseptic, well-inseptic.
I'm sorry, well-inseptic persons. It would be the impact through the normal general fund budget, such as if the water rates for the school system were to increase, and there was an increase from the budget appropriately, that would be the impact the general fund budget would take. I got a little mixed up there. I hope I was clear enough on the answer.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else from the council? Questions?
Through the chair. You mentioned that the Watertown Sewer Authority is subordinate to the town. Is that a change in recent years? Because I know that you made some changes to that, or has it always been that sort of order in the charter? Because I know that the Water and Sewer Authority is its own separate authority within the charter.
Well, actually, yeah, Attorney Jessel will answer that, but just so it's clear, I have made no changes to the charter. That would be the responsibility of the council.
Oh, no, I don't mean you made changes to the charter. I meant, I just, the word subordinate to the town council, I just am wondering if that's always been the way it's been.
Yeah, the answer to that is yes. And I mentioned before the consolidation ordinance.
Right.
That's where all of this comes from.
Okay.
And it does set up the Water and Sewer Authority as subordinate to the town, although with some very distinct powers of their own.
Okay, oh, well, that's good, because that was my next question, is then, should they, at the time, have gotten authority from the town council? I was not on the town council at the time, so I wasn't, I don't know if there was a vote, but should they have, at the time, gotten authority from the town council to not pay the rates that Waterbury was charging or had some discussion about it at that time?
Well, two things. Number one, it's a rate issue, which is really primarily in the ballpark of the Water and Sewer Authority. Secondly, it was a strategy, trial strategy issue, and it was brought up to both the Water and Sewer Authority and the town council in discussions on trial strategy.
I'll set, Rachel?
I think so.
I have a couple of quick, simple questions. The referendum, are the questions separated and could one fail and one pass?
Attorney Rybacky, would you please?
The answer is yes and yes. Both questions are individual questions. One is not contingent upon the other. So either both can pass, both can fail, one or the other.
Beautiful. And when is the, in the event, let's hope not, that this passes, or hopefully it doesn't fail? fail, how quickly can we do another referendum?
I'd have to look what the notice requirements would be. Off the top, I don't have that, actually, if you could maybe wait one minute. One moment.
So. So as Mr. Ry, Attorney Ryback is looking that up, I did have some discussions with the town clerk. So there is a statute 9-369A which actually prevents us from putting anything on the ballot for the election in November because of the timeframe. So we do have some ordinance postings and notice postings. It would be very difficult for us to get this done until the end of November, beginning of December. I don't know if you have more specific timelines?
Yeah, the, thank you for allowing me to look. The requirement for notice for a referendum that's standing alone, that's by the town, is 30 days. So if we were to look at how long to kind of re-T it up, we're looking at 30 days, then add on council action, add on any other steps that are on there. So it's, it's nothing that we could redo very quickly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Through the chair. Related to the referendum, I'm having two questions, two different sets of bonds, and this might be more hypothetical, but let's just say the bond for the roads passes and the one for the water and sewer fails. Are, would we expect Waterbury to, and this might be more for Paul Jessel, but would we expect Waterbury to, I would say, try to prevent us from getting other bonding for other projects while we still have an outstanding debt with them?
Yeah, I, I would be of the belief that they don't have that power.
Anybody else? Yeah, you're good? Everybody's good? All right.
I do have one last comment.
Sure, go ahead, Jonathan.
Although we had lots of questions from you guys and we asked lots of questions, got a good number of answers, at the end of the day, the ratepayers, the town, whatever group you want to look at, we're looking at 18% interest. If we have an opportunity to refinance that at 4%, we got to take it. The longer we wait, the more money we're wasting. A lot of these details, yes, they're important, but it does not really affect the question that's on the ballot, and that is we need a bond to reduce our interest. If not, we're going to be throwing hundreds of thousands of dollars away per month while we figure out other details that really are not related to the bond. And that's why I think it's very important for us to vote yes.
Well said, Jonathan. Anything else that, any, Paul, anybody wants to add? Obviously not to public, but any of you guys?
Just, just one thing. In addition to that, as you just said, bringing it to 18 to 4%, if there's something happens down the road that I can't think of, but that, that a grant comes in or something unexpected comes in to say, hey, listen, we don't need to borrow the full 30 million or whatever the amount is, the town still has that options to knock down that borrowing cost over the next 12 months. So all those options that people brought up to say, hey, listen, can we look at something else, those options are still viable. And if they come to fruition, the amount that will actually be permanently financed can be reduced. That option doesn't go away to reduce the amount to borrow.
And one other quick question. Are we able to do bans of short-term bonds for more than one year? Let's say we're waiting on the state Supreme Court because they decided to take it up. Is that something that we can kind of keep rolling forward or do we need to make a decision?
Yes, you can. But you, probably the thought in that is you start taking on market risk at that point because you'd be resetting every year.
Yep. Okay. Any comments from staff? Good? All right. Thank you, everybody.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.